So Bernie, I know you're calling in with no video. Did you Chairman want to kick off the meeting and welcome everybody to our first inaugural Zoom meeting?
Yeah, I'm on the video, but nobody's let me in.
I, you look like you were just trying to call. That's how it shows up on my screen.
It says, please wait, the meeting host will let you in soon.
Okay, are you, let's try this. Let's see if this gets you in here.
It's doing something. There we go.
Okay, it didn't show up with your name. That's why I didn't let the person into the video.
This is our newfound power.
I know. So excited.
So who do we have on the call?
So you, do you see everybody on the screen? Are you up on a computer that you can see?
Yep, I'm scrolling through it now.
Okay.
There's Dan.
So I think Michelle, for the purposes of attendance, the only, we've got one, two, three.
I got you, I got you up on my spectrum TV. I can see all you on my TV.
Perfect. So who, where, who are we missing from attendance here?
Mary, Mary.
Mary and Jack.
And Jack.
Yeah, okay. So we can note that for the record, although we really don't have to note that for the record for the workshop. All right, so the first item on the agenda was the yoga signage. No significant discussion at the first workshop meeting in March where it was talked about. I know that you guys noted that I hip, I hip, that hip group had submitted their comments to the board. Oh, Bernie's here and he's landing planes.
Yeah, I forgot to take my slide off.
That's all right. I feel like I want to do 10 for after each, after each case.
Hey Alan, they record these, so you gotta behave.
Okay, so um, we are, even though our workshop meetings aren't normally broadcast for the purposes of making this a public meeting, this is being broadcast on Facebook Live and it's brought, being broadcast on ICAT as well. So this is, you know, sort of new territory for the virtual reality that we're living right now. So any other, do you guys have any other comments or questions that we should share with the applicant for the yoga studio on Titus?
Just a comment, I, I tried to look at Facebook when I couldn't get on. Oh, now it's showing. Okay.
Okay.
It's a little delayed. Okay.
Alrighty.
I think we were all good.
Perfect. Um, Michelle, I'm bringing up my, my, um, my agenda. What's the next item on the agenda? Is it the?
Marshals.
Good.
Marshals. So memory serves me for that, for that particular project, you didn't have any substantial comments. The applicant noted that they took comments or notes from the, their initial meeting with the workshop on, in March. Any changes or questions or concerns that you, we should share with them?
I don't have any.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, great.
So 657, no comments. And 2255, no comments.
Okay. The, um, and then the next item on the agenda was the application for the, the tent project. I could, the, there is a representative that's available by phone, not by video. Just as a recap, I did send email communication to the applicant indicating that what was submitted was not sufficient as far as level of detail. They, they continued to provide sort of hand drawn things over either like an aerial or a site plan, but things weren't drawn to scale. They weren't labeled or measured. They were to scale, but that was difficult to show because the lines were hand drawn and, and quite honestly, they were crooked. So I explained that there's a minimum standard that we have to maintain as far as what's an acceptable application and that hadn't yet met the, met the requirement in order for the board to consider it. I think he wanted the opportunity to be able to share their thoughts and feedback. He did express concern that he thought it was about the use of fireworks. I explained that that's not this board's decision, that that's, you know, you're simply looking at the site plan related elements in a busy parking lot and making sure that whatever, if even a temporary use and facility should, needs to be safe and protect, you know, pedestrians, vehicles, people, you know, ingress, egress, those kinds of things. So if you guys, do you have any discussion, do you want the, I, I'm gonna include the, the applicant's representative so they can be hearing this, the conversation? Is that okay? I'm gonna get ready to do that right now.
Can they actually explain to us what they're trying to tell us on paper?
Um, so I think, and Michelle, I don't know if we forwarded the additional material that was submitted. It wasn't, it hadn't yet met the planning board's request for the type of information they were looking for. So we were, I don't know if, Michelle, you hadn't received anything additional from what?
I don't remember receiving, yeah, I don't remember receiving anything from them, honey. I'm sorry.
I saw your comments, Carrie. That's what I've seen.
Yep, okay, yeah.
But in the drop, like though, is, all that's there is the original application.
Um, and I can, let me, and I can happy to forward to you all now. The, again, the additional didn't, wasn't much different than what was originally submitted. So that's why it didn't make it, it didn't get submitted to you as a group because it wasn't much different than what had originally been submitted. So, but Arian Powell from TNT, I believe, is on the phone and listening. So as you guys are talking, if you have questions for the applicant, you certainly can, you should be able to hear. Aaron, can you hear the, hear us on the call?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. So your item is up on the agenda. We just recapped the initial conversation from the March Planning Board Workshop Meeting, provided them with the background that I provided you some feedback. And the board, I believe, received that email communication. I think I forwarded to them the email communication I had sent to you. So the board's gonna continue their conversation. If they have questions, they'll direct those questions to you, okay? So you're, at this point, if we were in the meeting in a room physically, what we would be telling you is you can hang back and then the board will either invite you to come up and chat with them or ask some questions and ask you to respond. So that's where we are right now. So you can just hang back and then if they have questions, they'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
I'm confused as to like the size of the tent, the egress, the ingress, the, the whole barrier system around this. I mean, I think we had a whole series of questions that the applicant was aware of.
So my, I could think my questions are is, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, you forwarded them the site checklist to fill out, but I'm not positive I saw the response.
You're muted, Carrie.
Am I correct?
I was trying to be a good citizen. I don't know if, I believe that we forwarded that or provided that via like the link of the, what's available on the website for the required submission. I don't believe we received that yet either. And then I will, I mean, in all fairness, just as a, you know, obviously, application, communication was happening after workshop and then shortly thereafter, you know, sort of end of days started to begin and we were, you know, just canceling meetings. So we really, there, you know, there has been a little bit of maybe a, a break in.
I get it.
Yeah.
But, but Carrie, my concern is, is I, I don't believe we've ever reviewed an application that did not have the site plan checklist filled out and just looked at, you know, a hand drawings on a piece of paper. So that's my concern is I don't believe we have the information we need to be able to make a ruling on this.
I would sort of support that comment, Mr. Chairman, and I think, and we don't have any drawings, honestly. We have an aerial photo with a square on it. So for me, there's a lot of issues if we work out and we really need drawings in order to do that.
Yeah, I'm not ready to take an action on this either unless it would be, you know, based on what I have, would be a negative action.
So I mean, so the applicant's on the phone. Do you have any other information to provide?
Well, I did, I did provide a survey drawing where I kind of indicated, an actual survey drawing where I indicated the size of the tent and the placement of the tent. I can't say I've had an engineer go out there and do a survey with placement of that tent in that parking lot and actually submit that. But I did submit an actual survey map for that site in addition to my aerial photos, which also have tent placement and size on it. So I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm kind of confused on what else is required. I mean, the application from what I see does say a site plan or an instrument survey map. It does say site or instrument survey map on it. I've, I've, so far, I've sent over three different maps. One of them is an actual drawing from a survey company, O'Neill-Rodeck Land Survey.
Does anybody have that?
I'm sorry?
I don't.
So I can, I can share with you, I can forward it to the group right now. And what it is, is it's a, it is prepared, it's a boundary survey map. So it doesn't have the labeled details that this board had identified as far as, it's not a site plan per se. So it doesn't have the labeled, you know, drive aisle widths. It doesn't have the, even the dimensions of the existing building, I don't think. The spaces themselves aren't labeled, so you don't even know dimensionally how big the existing spaces are. And then simply over that map is a hand drawn with the letters in writing that say 20 by 40 tent written in hand by hand. So I'm happy to forward that to this group so you can review it. I looked at it and it didn't meet the minimum requirements that this board had expressed at the workshop in March, which is why I didn't forward it to this group because it didn't, it didn't rise to the level of answering the questions that you all asked, the updated or new drawing to provide. I'm forwarding it, I'm forwarding it now so you all can see it if you have access to your.
You have it on your, couldn't you just put it on the share screen? Is that something we can do?
Oh, are we gonna be fancy? I, I, let me, um, hang on one second. Let me bring that up real quick and let me hold on one moment. I'm gonna put you on mute so you don't hear me mumbling.
So while, while Carrie's, while Carrie's doing that, I want to give you a little Zoom tip here. If you mute yourself and then you push and hold spacebar, it will temporarily unmute you. And then when you let go of spacebar, it will be, so you don't have to go find that green button in the corner every time. Just, just a tip.
I would game, game, thank you.
Hey Brad, where's the split screen on this?
Um, what do you mean?
When she shares it, how am I gonna see it?
I think it'll just pop up.
Okay.
Question, answer.
Oh. I know the size of the tent, now don't I?
Well, just, just for the record, as far as what I'm looking at here, and I'm pretty sure it's what everybody else is looking at, this is, this is not a survey. This is an aerial photo.
So are you guys looking at something that says FNY055 in the corner? Okay, so I'm sharing that, Carrie. I don't know if this is the latest one.
It is not.
Not? Okay. Then I'll stop sharing. Carrie, I don't know if we want to table this for now and come back to it once we got the latest one in our mailbox.
I'm gonna try to share it on the screen in a moment. So let me, why don't you, do you want to move on to the next one while I figure out the technology?
Uh, yeah, or if you send it to me an email, I can share it if you want me to.
Okay.
Either or.
All right.
I, I think we should, ought to wait so we don't bounce around too much on the app.
Yeah, I'm with Mike on this.
Okay. I think I'm ready to share screen. So if it's just open on my desktop, will it show up?
On your, on the bottom and hit the green that says share screen. Then it's gonna ask you what window you want to share. You're gonna select the window that you want to share.
Okay, I got it. I can tell that Brad's a resident expert in this. All right, you all should be able to see it now.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know, can you see my screen? So this is the area that's been. Do you all see what I'm looking at? Do you need me to zoom in?
I see it.
So this was what was submitted as a site plan or an updated survey map, which is why I didn't forward it to this group. Because it was still the same idea, just drawn over a, a boundary plan provided by a surveyor. And it wasn't, and whatever this is might be just like the legal boundary of a property that was used for purchase or leasing or financing. But again, it doesn't have any dimensional, you know, information on it. And then the drawing itself, I don't know how, the, the applicant has indicated it's to scale. However, it's, it's drawn by hand apparent, to me, it appears to be drawn by hand. I don't know how you draw to scale by hand.
So anyway, you look at it, I, you know, unless there's something else been submitted, we don't have the information we could make that we could move forward on this.
What, what do we, what, what is additionally needed at this point, I guess is my biggest question.
I, I believe Carrie provided that to you in an email and quite frankly, you haven't provided it. We, we don't, we don't approve projects that come submitted like this. There, there's information lacking. This, this is not something we could rule on. If we had a rule on this right now, it would, it would probably get a very negative ruling because we don't have the information.
Well, that's what I'm, I guess I'm wondering, is we did send out 22 packets. My, my corporate office sent out the, you know, the letter of intent, the pictures of our site, the pictures of our setup, our lease, all that was sent out, it exactly as outlined. I mean, 22 packets were sent out on the beginning of February.
Carrie, you provided the, Carrie, you provided the checklist, correct?
Correct, and also provided feedback on the application as it was received to indicate before even the March workshop that additional information was needed. Again, reiterated that after the workshop and you all echoed the same comments that staff had provided, we reiterated that to the applicant. And then that, the most recent, the PDF that you're looking at now was what was submitted in response to that. And then I indicated via email back saying this was still not meeting the minimum requirement for the planning board.
Right, so the comments that I got just say that they're, they're looking at everybody. I mean, the comments that I'm seeing at least from the, that meeting, just are looking for a site plan.
But I see if you were. Yeah.
Right, and, and the site plan needs to show the items that would be pertinent that are on the site plan checklist, which this has none of.
Well, that, I guess I don't know. I guess I haven't seen that list to know that, unfortunately.
Carrie, was the, the site plan checklist provided to them in the package?
Um. I will double check.
I believe, I mean, at the point where.
Yeah. We believe it's part of our application in general. Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so to that point, I think you got a choice here. You can, we've given you all the information that we don't have enough information to rule on this. If you're asking us to rule on what we have in front of us, I would assume, I don't know for sure, but most of the board would probably have a lot of issues with it. I think you need to go back and take a look at the package that you were provided and contact the town. Are they able to contact you, Carrie?
They can, yes. Yeah, so.
So they know how to contact.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm physically reporting to Town Hall most days. I am working remotely some days. But checking voicemails, access to email, regular hours and even after hours, obviously as well. But I am available and I can provide sample, I mean, typically when we say a site plan or, you know, a scaled drawing, I can provide some examples. And there were two emails that were sent on the 16th. It was after the workshop, we provided, you know, the feedback and I'm happy to forward that to the board.
Yeah, I think what, my, my suggestion though is, is if this, the purpose of the workshop is to let you know what we have is not sufficient. It's also, you know, if you have specific questions. Right now, I think all the information has been provided to you to, to provide a sufficient application. So if you got questions on what's sufficient, that's why you, you contact the town board staff before we get to this point. This is the second workshop, I believe, on this item, correct?
Yes.
And it's the second time that we still don't have what we need to move forward. So I, I, you have a choice. I mean, if, I could tell you, if you go forward with this, it's not gonna probably be what you're expecting. But you have time to get with the town to, you know, ask any questions. If you got any specific questions, you can ask them, but it doesn't sound to me like you've even reviewed the checklist to be able to ask the right kind of question. I'm just gonna call.
No, I, I haven't reviewed the checklist. The notes, the notes that I'm seeing that were from Carrie to me, say, required, you know, comments from staff review, say site plan.
And the application requires a scaled, a scaled survey or site plan showing the existing parking lot conditions, parking, stop signs, landscaping, and the proposed locations and dimensions of the tent. The drawing must be to scale, the plan, meaning the drawing of the additional items, not just the original drawing that you're drawing on top of. The plan should also demonstrate proximity to existing drive aisles, designated parking for the temporary tent and any proposed separation between the tents, outer walls and vehicular traffic, jersey barriers, et cetera. Detail of the tent that shows elevation, meaning height, what it looks like from the ground up to where it stops being on the ground. Or a specification sheet from the tent manufacturer or provider that gives a sense of what does this thing look like from the ground? If I'm driving or walking up toward it, what does it look like from street level? That's what an elevation is referencing. And then we indicated what would be helpful were pictures of the current parking lot in the vicinity of where the tent is being proposed would be helpful, but isn't required to be deemed complete. And so, you know, and, and the, although most of what the planning board reviews is, you know, computer generated as far as, you know, the drawings of the proposed changes to a site are typically computer generated. There are occasions where designing professionals have hand drawn their proposed improvements, but they are drawn to scale. In other words, you know, if you have a scale on a, you know, it's the, and it's, and typically, especially for a project like this, it would be blown up, you know, you'd have a view from out here, the, the current view of the entire parking lot. And then you might be scaled in a little bit closer so you get a closer look at what is the configuration of the tent and the area around the tent. And I think what we communicated, and Aaron, you and I had a phone call, and I think there's just a misunderstanding of the technical, of what's required technically, is that this, this drawing does not meet that minimum standard. It's a hand drawn sort of, and forgive me for being, but it's, you know, crooked lines certainly couldn't be scaled. And to, I understand to your point, it's a, it's a tent structure, but it should be, the four corners should be, you know, in general, they would be laid out to try to be as, you know, square as possible, I would assume.
Right, so I guess, I guess my, my question is, is that the only item on the checklist? You keep talking about checklist and the only thing we're talking about is a site plan. So what else is missing from this checklist?
Okay, so the, the checklist is available around the website, but I'll direct, I'll email to you directly. And what it gives you is the list of the things that should be represented on the plan that you submit.
So the checklist is, is directly related to the site plan, not, not anything else.
Correct.
That's what we're talking about is the checklist for the site plan.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just confused. I mean, I, I set up 130 of these sites across New York State and I don't, I don't have to do this at those other locations. So that's what I'm trying to figure out is all the details of it.
And, and I apologize, I'm taking up, but as staff, I'll answer that question. Every municipality in New York State has its own zoning regulations. And so certain things might be ministerial in, in terms of staff can approve it and/or a building inspector could issue a permit and no planning or zoning review is needed. In our regulations, this is a use that needs not only the planning board's review and approval because of its location in an existing developed, you know, plaza that already has an approved site plan. And this is representing a change to that site plan. In addition, because of the outdoor component, the fact that retail is happening outside of brick and mortar requires that zoning board consent as well, which we talked about. So the, it just is, it's a function of our zoning code, which is what's triggering the need for this planning and zoning review.
Go ahead.
In addition to the improvements that we're looking for in the site plan, we also had some conversations last workshop meeting about some protective measures that could be put in place around the perimeter. Perimeter of the test, of the tent, um, so that if someone, um. Were driving erratically or an accident were to happen, that there would be some type of barrier to keep a vehicle from crashing through the tent. Um, and then I know that there were also some questions about parking. Like how many, um, employees would be there? Where would they park? How many, uh, customers do you expect? Um, where will they park? I mean, obviously probably in that enormous parking lot, but will that, um, trigger? Um, will the removal of those parking spots trigger any sort of? Other implications on the existing businesses there that then they will not meet their minimum parking requirements?
I also think, just to add on to what Bradley just said, um, I also think at the last workshop, we had some, I think, pretty in-depth conversation about. Physically where in the parking lot this might go. Um, this is a very busy parking lot in general, especially this area right up here, kind of by the intersection where cars are coming in and out. And there would absolutely need to be protective measures, but I'm not sure, and I'm not speaking to the rest of the board necessarily, but. Um, I'm pretty sure at the last workshop, we discussed that this location is probably not a super favorable location. Um, because it's such a heavily trafficked area right there. So I, I think there also needs to be consideration and thought. About protection or where this is going in general.
And also the entrance, the entrance and the exit being shown on the drawing. And this actually, in addition to vehicle traffic, also has buses going through this area. City buses, so.
Yeah, I mean, the location of the tent is totally, totally flexible. That's, that's, that's easy. Like I said, it's a tent. I tell them where to put it. Um, so that's, that's a non-issue as far as, you know. As far as exits, entrances on, on these tents, it's pretty much where, where the operator, you know, has to be clearly marked as exits. Um, some municipalities want lighted exit signs, some do not. Um, but they're clearly marked, um, and they are provided, you know, clear access. Um, yeah, I do have plans for several different tent configurations, but again, it's a tent with folding tables, so. It's what is most convenient or what's most logical for the, for the location. Um, so it's, it's. Again, I, I don't, I don't know that, that it's really coming down to where that tent is as much as. The concerns of the safety of the, of the tent being there. Um, I think that's the real issue. I mean, we can pick apart drawings all day long, but if I, if I put it. If I were to submit a drawing right now from a, if I was going to pay, contract the company to submit this drawing and you guys all said, Jeff, the drawing is good. But you gotta move it. So how many times am I going to pay a company to move it if we don't have these conversations? So again, these things aren't, these things aren't being communicated to me. So why would I go out and have that expense to have this drawing done to scale one hundred percent if you want it in CAD? If you wanted in, in a whatever form. I mean, by actual one hundred percent dictionary definition, this is a site plan. It is the scale. If you're telling me your parking spaces are eight to nine feet wide, it's the scale. So by definition, it is a scaled drawing of a site plan. However, it still wouldn't meet the requirement because it's not where you guys want the tent to be. So I, we need to have the conversation of where do you want the tent to be? And how many times do you want me to submit the same thing before we say it's just not going to happen?
I think that's a question to ask, you know, I understand what you're saying about having to draw it up and you don't want to draw it up in that location. Cause we're kind of indicating that perhaps that's not the best location. So maybe we could give them some guidance on places that we want it, would rather it be. But I know for sure that I don't think that that location is going to work because if you did put barriers around the perimeter of that same size tent. It's going to be out in the drive aisles. And so how, how do we? How do we put that in a place that's not going to impact the flow of the vehicles in that parking lot without? You know, because it's going to impact drive aisles, I would suppose, unless you made the parking lot or the tent smaller.
Right, and, and my point, you know, that we need the drawings and, and so on, we can't really. Answer the question of where we want this thing to be or where we think it should go. Without knowing exactly what we're talking about from a site plan standpoint. If the barriers. Add ten feet on all sides, that completely changes the conversation that we're having. If there's. A portage on, a camper and a generator that also take up six more spaces twenty-five feet away, that changes again where we're going to locate this stuff. So without drawings that indicate, you know, everything that you're proposing to do here. We can't really answer the question of where things need to go.
Right. I mean, my proposal is a twenty foot by forty foot tent with weights that hold it down. Um, it is flameproof fabric. It is flame certified. It is insured. It is professionally installed. Out of, out of the thousands of tents we put up across the United States. I think there's probably three that have any kind of concrete barrier near them. Um, so that's not a typical proposed thing for us. We don't put barriers around tents. Uh, we assume that the motor in public knows that you don't drive through merchandise. Because of the thousands of tents we put up nationwide, it doesn't happen. So that wouldn't be in my proposed drawing because I don't put that stuff at any other location. So again, it wouldn't be on the drawing anyway. So the only thing that you would see on my site is what you see in the picture that I sent, which is in color. Has a tent with barrels, has the height, has the signs, has the flags, everything on, and that was submitted twenty-two times. And that's my proposed everything.
The good thing is that you can answer our questions within the next two weeks, so that part will be great for you. I think you sort of get what we're looking for though.
Yeah, I kind of can. I mean, our, our permitting process is beyond that unfortunately, so that's why we started it a couple of months ago. Um.
Does it get a.
But I'll have to, what's that?
Does the tent use electricity? I mean, is there stuff in there that uses electric?
No, there's not.
And where do the, um, employees use the restroom?
Uh, typically there's at least two people on staff. One of them, if they need to use a restroom, if they need to eat a meal. Um, somebody stays with the, the tent and the merchandise and the other one goes to do that.
Is the tent located in a place where if it rains, that there's not going to be pooling underneath of it? Uh, how are you making sure that this location of the tent is in a good spot comparative to however the, uh, parking lot needs water?
Well, I mean, we don't set it up over drains, but, um, you know, I can't, I definitely can't predict what weather is going to do. I definitely have water in some tents. Um, and at that point, you know, the, the people staffing those tents has to get the water out of that tent. Um, I, unfortunately, again, I can't, I can't really go out there and sit and watch a weather pattern. I don't set them up over drainage. I don't set them up over, um, low points and on property, but.
Well, I just answered these questions because they're the type of questions that would be answered by a full site plan.
I g- I do have a question about electricity. You're going to be open until ten o'clock at night, but provide no electricity?
No, they're able to be open till ten o'clock at night. They don't have to be. If they're, I mean, if they want electricity, I. You know, I leave that up to the tent operator, but I do not.
Well, that's, that's a part that we can't leave up to. The site, we need to know that on the site plan.
A site, a site plan that shows electricity?
If there's going to be a generator on the site to provide electricity, we need to know where that is and how it's being protected.
Yeah, I don't provide generators. Like I said, I just put up a tent and put a person on fireworks in there. Typically they shut down at dark.
Okay, well, the application says that it will be open until ten o'clock at night.
Right.
As, as permitted by local ordinance. And they're not going to stay open until ten o'clock at night. But if it's got to be shut down at dark, it shuts down at dark. Again, it's as permitted by local ordinances.
Well, if you show us that there's no generator and then we'll, um, have the hours that will reflect. Um, the safety of the shoppers inside also. I think those are the kinds of things that we want you to think about so you can answer them for us.
Right, and again, those are the questions that I need to know about. I, I can't answer those questions until we have this conversation. And this is the first time in two months that we've had it.
Yep, and we, we were eager to talk to you last month, but nobody was available.
So let me, something you said, just maybe ask a question. You said, a lot of things are up to the person that's running the tent. So I'm just trying to understand, is this where you just provide the tent and then somebody else like sublets? To sell the product or do you control all aspects of how they, how they set up? How they display, you know, how, so where they put the entrance and exit, or are they allowed to? Do whatever they feel is right once they're on site? I'm trying to understand that a little bit.
So the person that, that runs the tent is an independent operator. Um, they are not an employee of TNT fireworks. They're an independent operator. We provide the guidance on how the signs are placed. How the entrances and exits are laid out, how local government wants things to be done and they cannot deviate from that. So if I say, you know, the exit's got to be on the south side of that tent centered up between these two poles, that's where they have to put it. Because, I mean, most, most everything that we do is governed by homeland security actually. So they come around and they do check these tents. They check every single location I have in the state of New York. Um, the state fire marshal comes around every tent and makes sure that these things are laid out properly per location. You know, so exit signs, exits, entrances, um. Fire extinguishers, water cans, all that is laid out specifically. So the guidance is given to these operators that this is how it has to be and somebody will be around to inspect it and the state fire marshal calls me if it's not right. So that is, there's not a lot of deviation from here's how it has to go. Um, that it has to be set that way. We give them, like I said, we give them the guidance to, do I? Um, they're not on my payroll, so they're independent operators.
So I guess what I'm saying is you could tell them that they could stay open till ten. But you would also tell them that you can't put a generator on site because you didn't put one on the site plan. Or could they just bring a generator and do it themselves? I'm just trying to understand how it works.
Not if it's not permitted. If, if it's, you know, generators aren't permitted, so you have to shut down at eight thirty PM. Then they have to shut down to eight thirty PM. They can't deviate from that.
Right, but we're looking for you as the applicant to provide us with what it is you are proposing to do. And according to the application, it's proposed to be open until ten. And we don't have any information, I mean, this is just one issue that we're discussing right now. But we don't have any information, the drawing that indicates that.
Well.
Well, I think we also talked at the workshop about security, right? Cause I think you said, I'm trying to look at what you presented. You provide twenty-four by seven security. I'm just curious as to how you do that when there's no lights and, you know, how, how is that provided?
So the operator that tent stays, stays on site with their product. So again, there's minimum two people on site at all times and somebody has to be there with that product and alert with that product twenty-four seven.
So where do those operators physically stay on site? Are they in an RV or a, a car or how do they stay there?
No, they're, they're in the tent.
So they're like living in the tent for the duration of them being here?
No, they're not living in the tent. There's a person staying there and, and protecting the property. While somebody else.
Twenty-four hour guard, you got a twenty-four hour guard is more or less what you're.
Correct, correct. Yeah, nobody's, nobody's sleeping on site. Nobody's putting, you know, setting up housekeeping on site. It's. Somebody making sure that that product is safe and secure.
Well, I think that answers the question about whether or not this needs electricity. I think it has to have electricity then if there's going to be somebody in this thing at nighttime and keeping it safe. That makes sense?
No, I mean, most of my sites don't have generators or electricity, so it's not a, it's not an absolute necessity by any means.
I, does he, are we required Kerry, um, to provide a port of sand for this site? If it's going to be a twenty-four hour operation?
I think you're on mute Kerry. Kerry, you're muted.
Sorry, my, first of all, I'll never make fun of my parents again for having to do any of these with them. Um, what I was saying is that I would have to check with the fire marshal. I don't, I don't know. Given the temporary status of the tent, if sanitation would need to be required on site.
I'm talking about Department of Labor, not.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I am aware of these and other locations in New York state, so I would have to believe that. That is not a requirement for them to be allowed in other places. Um, we're just having them, this is, um, going through this level of review based on our zoning and, uh, site plan requirements.
Oh, I, I just want to make sure we, we bring this back around and give the applicant at least something to work off of here. I mean, obviously we have to. Go through and look at the site plan checklist. Kerry's going to send that to you and make sure that you've got all those things checked off. I believe we, and I don't know if this was, was too brief or, or at least I'll voice my opinion that this is not an ideal location in my mind. It's a very busy corner. Um, we're definitely going to require jersey barriers, at least I will from my standpoint. Um, if you were to move it someplace else in that parking lot that's not nearly as busy, I mean. You can see from the aerial photo that's up on the screen right now, there are areas that are not parked in as often. Um, you know, maybe there's some leeway there. I don't know. What I will say also is, you know, your application right now says it's open till ten PM. And the picture you submitted with your application includes a picture of a portable generator. So if I'm making a decision off of what's put in front of me right now, I'm going to assume you have electricity. So that's something that I'll need you to clarify whether or not you intend to do that. Um, those three things. I just want to give you something so you know what to work off of, I'm not, you know what I mean?
No, absolutely.
Any other questions or?
I don't have any further questions. I mean, if I have that checklist to kind of work off, again, I have to. Obviously run this through my corporate office as well. Um, as far as how far we go with this, unfortunately our permitting window is closing rapidly, um, per state permitting, so. Um, and of course, things are much slower in, in their current, uh, situation unfortunately, so. Uh, like I said, I'll hopefully, you know, if Kerry can get me that checklist, I can go through that with my corporate office and we can proceed from there.
Okay, any other questions? Anything else the board wants to add? If anybody's talking, they must be on mute.
I'm good, thank you.
What's up Bernie?
Thank you.
All set.
All set.
Okay. Kerry, anything else you want to add before?
No, I think we're all set. I'll, we'll go ahead and make sure we follow up with the, the site plan checklist.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
We're, we're all, we're all back to business by then, so.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you. And Kerry, they do know how to reach the town, right?
They do, I, I, yeah, so I, I mean, I forwarded, I had forwarded, forwarded to Michelle and I have her forwarded to you. The email exchange back from the, you know, after the workshop meeting, so he didn't know how to reach out to me and honestly, we hadn't heard anything. From then until now, and it wasn't until we sent the notification out about. The format for this meeting that we heard that he would be attending, um, but, you know, participating in the workshop meeting. We hadn't received any follow-up communication and.
No, I already attended, so I got the info.
Right, so the other, the other thing too is then certainly feel free after this or, um. You know, separately, if it doesn't have to be part of tonight's meeting, you can communicate with me if I should have forwarded you what he sent to me. What I shared with you up on the screen as a part of a complete application. I didn't, I just didn't think it, I. Didn't think I needed to verify with you that that didn't meet the requirement. Was I accurate about that?
As far as I'm concerned.
Okay, okay, all right. I just didn't want to.
It was closer, but it, you know, it, it doesn't show the full thing. You know, like I say, there's a general. It was closer, but it, you know, it it doesn't show the full thing. You know, like I say, there's a generator in that picture.
Right.
So if if you're gonna have that as part of your application, you need to make sure you call out that you're either gonna have it or not.
Okay. Um, next item on the agenda.
Hudson Avenue.
So, um, the applicant was at the workshop. Um, you and you brought, you all provided feedback and comments. Dan, this might be one where we wanted to make sure that the board, this is subdivision approval. So the, the board doesn't have to, doesn't have enough, doesn't get to weigh in really on the individual lot development. So that's a sort of a, because this isn't a, this isn't a place where the development location could impact whether or not another type of permit could be issued or not. And so subdivision of land is really just lines on paper. The applicant had provided sort of a showing of the layout warehouses might be and where the private road would be. But I think that was one question that had come up from the board, just making sure that they were sort of very focused in on the things that they could comment on and approve or disprove, or or deny, or things that they they can't consider as part of their application.
Well, I think part of it too was the applicant was actually asking for input, if I recall. Even though it was welcome, welcome, welcoming input, I guess is the way I would say it.
Right, but I think.
How how far do we go before we're we're going too far, I think?
Right, because you're, this board is granting subdivision approval, that they're not before you for site plan. It's an, it's an individual, you know, building lot for a residential in a residential zone. So if there are pieces of like the granting of the subdivisions, like so, for example, the location or the width of the, the access road. I know there was some communication from the Fire Marshal's Office about modifications to ensure a legal turnaround and fire apparatus.
That's, that's the single, that's the single biggest issue and question I have with the whole thing. Because my understanding of the codes, and I think the Fire Marshal's write-up indicated that it may not work the way it's done, so.
Right.
I I guess, Dan, our, our question or my question is, how do we look at granting subdivision approval for something if now that we know based on what's been put on paper in front of us, which is more site plan related, doesn't work? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and then the the specific question is whether the width of the driveway or the width of the road is is sufficient and is that.
It's, it's more about a fire truck turnaround. So there's, there's like maximum dead ends that you can have before you have to have what they call a T or a cul-de-sac. So that a fire truck, once it gets in there, can get out if there's a different emergency or just to get themselves out of there. And and I don't believe it complies with that.
Carrie, is that, do you know, is that in the code?
Well, it's actually part of the state, the building code, as far as the requirement for, the, from the for the fire, the fire code. So that's what the Fire Marshal's looking at is, can that design meet that requirement for minimum distance? Because it is a private road. It's not, you know, there's distances that you have to legally get to the structures in a safe way to respond to emergency and or fire. And right now, the configuration would not allow, would not meet the minimum requirement for that private roadway. So I think, Michelle, did the applicant receive the Fire Marshal comments?
Um, I believe directly from the Fire Marshal. He did a letter right to John Saraba at his address.
Okay, that's what I thought. And we haven't received any updated drawings or modifications at this point?
Um, I don't believe so. I'm just checking my email. I did send, I did just forward the email with the, the county comments and the Fire Marshal comments again. Because they were, those were the ones that were garbled, right Brad?
I'll speak for Brad, yes.
Okay.
So, what do we, we can follow. We can follow up with the applicant to make sure that they receive the comments. I don't know if they, they, we haven't, I don't, to my knowledge, we haven't received any revised drawings at this point. So I don't know if they are looking to modify the configuration, make a change.
Could we make a change? Could we go from five lots to four lots to make it comply?
The applicant would have to make that change.
I think that's quite honestly what would need to happen here, and I guess, Dan, that's where my question is. I mean, if theoretically, all we're supposed to be doing is looking at lines on a piece of paper, right? All we're really talking about is the portion of properties. But if we know that in the configuration, the way it's set up, that the subdivision isn't going to work because of Fire Marshal comment. How and what can we do, or how do we find out?
Um, I'm actually, just looking through the code now, my guess is that there's, there's something in there that would allow you to consider whether, whether the project or the proposed subdivision complies with state building and fire code regulations. Or something like that, but you just give me a few minutes here, I'll just double check that there's there's something in there that says that that's a proper consideration in approving a subdivision.
Well, in the county comments, that's the first bullet point, letter A. It says, we recommend the board consider the following comments before acting on this application. And number, letter A is, the proposed private road is designed and built to allow ready access by emergency vehicles. And that's what we're all thinking.
What we, what we could do is provide the feedback that the current design can't meet the minimum requirement in, as stated in the uniform.
Maybe, maybe what we say, Carrie, is that we would like the applicant to prove that it can meet. Cause I mean, I don't, I don't know for sure. I mean, I'm ninety-nine percent sure it's not going to. But if they can provide some way that it works, great.
Right.
Or even if they can just go down through this list of bullet points that the county provided, there's a few in there that I think are good points. They would typically respond to those anyways, wouldn't they?
Typically, they do. A lot of times, John will, you know, sort of reference the county letter, and he'll indicate if there's any showstoppers. And that's a, or no, no showstoppers in there. But what we can do is request that the county, the Fire Marshal's comments and the county's comments be responded to in writing to the board. That's something we've done.
And I think it's, I think it's absolutely fine to to look at the county comments and ask the applicant to respond to them. Oh, I just will, I will say, you know, sort of strictly speaking, the board couldn't, if the county recommended that the board consider something that the board doesn't have jurisdiction to consider. That wouldn't, that doesn't give you jurisdiction to consider. So basically, if you're not allowed to consider sort of like the width of the road or access or whatever in providing subdivision approval, just because the county recommends that you consider it, doesn't mean. But but I do think it's absolutely fine to say, yeah, please applicant respond to these county comments or question.
So Carrie, nobody from the applicant's side has attended this workshop?
No, and I, you know, my guess would be, either they received your comments at the first one. Maybe they're under review with the comments from the Fire Marshal and the county, you know, plan review. So we can, we can follow back up and just indicate to them that we're, the, the board requested a response in writing. Or some type of a response in writing or in revised drawings that address the comments.
So, but I mean, and I apologize, I might have been reading. So Dan, did you ask the question about what we, I heard you say that even if the Monroe County said we had to consider something if it's not within our consideration. So is, what, I guess, what can we do with this particular situation? If we think there's a, an emergency vehicle concern? I mean, does that get in the way of putting the lines on paper, or maybe, maybe I misunderstood?
No, and and so I I found the provision of the, of the code that would allow you to consider this. And so that is code. Sorry, I was trying to switch between programs on my computer. Two, code section two oh four nineteen allows the board to consider whether the plan complies with all town codes, regulations and rules. So the, the town in applying the New York State Building and Fire Code, that, that would be a that would be a proper consideration. So you, you can say this, this plan doesn't comply with the, with the fire code, and therefore we're not going to approve it, if you want. Or you should consider that, actually.
Or how they're gonna remediate it, more or less, right?
We can't mitigate the circumstance for him, he has to do that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that would take a variance from New York State to not meet that.
No, I'm talking about. Four plots instead of five.
Yeah, the applicant needs to come to that determination, not the, the board.
He may have financing, he may have other things associated with that.
And when we talked at the last meeting, we also, I mean, he can do whatever he wants. But I guess we talked about that it doesn't necessarily have to be a turnaround. So if the, uh, it could be emergency egress onto Small Ridge Lane, that could also be another way to have a, you know, another option on the table.
I thought there was concerns, Brad, yeah, Brad, I thought there was concerns about who actually owns parts of that. I'm trying to remember the conversation.
There was an easement issue that the property, the adjacent property owner could not grant an easement. Cause originally, the board had asked them to look at Small Ridge as the point of connectivity to this subdivision. That was not achievable. I'm not clear about whether or not they could get enough width. One of the things that the Fire Marshal had looked at was whether or not along the, forgive me, the southern boundary of the, the, that fifth lot, whether there might be an easement, an opportunity to create like a twenty-foot easement that would allow, you know, emergency access, have it be designed so that it's, you know, it looks and feels like a side yard. But if emergency personnel or emergency vehicle had to get there and or turn around, they could. I don't know if that would achieve the, the requirement under New York State Building Code. And I believe that the Fire Marshal had provided a couple of, you know, the reference to the location of what the options are available to the to the applicant. I think to Spencer's point, I think we made the point that how it stands currently does not appear to meet the building code, and that they either have to modify it or demonstrate how it does. Yes?
I would support that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what, Artwork talks about a variance. What if they got a variance?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a three to six months process, Bernie, through New York State. And I doubt New York State would grant it, cause there's no.
I, I agree, but I'm saying, if they did go through that process, I'm just asking the question. And they had a variance, then that takes it out of our hands, I'm just curious.
Yeah, they would have to come back to us in three to six months, once they received that variance to prove it. I wouldn't be willing to condition it upon that, because I think the likelihood of that variance would be very, very low.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm good, no, but Carrie, I guess, when you go back to them, this particular, they usually come back with details. Or at least they will at the meeting, go through everything that was submitted and how they, they addressed it, right? So are you gonna ask for them to submit that ahead of time, or just bring up this one concern?
No, I think what we're gonna do is ask the applicant to address the comments received by the Fire Marshal's Office and by the Monroe County Plan Review. And then they should pay us a special focus on the emergency apparatus and how right now appears that this.
Can we add Fire Marshal to that as well?
I do, yes, Fire Marshal as well. I'm sorry, if it made my, my sound might have not carried through. Fire Marshal and Monroe County Plan Review comments, they should respond to both. And that they, of particular interest or concern is how they plan to meet the New York State requirement for emergency service access. And we can, we can do that, send that email out tomorrow. And we'll ask for it in writing, so they provide a written response to the board, preferably in advance of the meeting.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
I could do it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Or I could do it tonight.
You can do it tomorrow, we're, we're good.
Tomorrow's acceptable.
Yes. So then, the next item on the agenda, if we're all set with that one, would be the signage at Culver Road. You should have been, you should have, you might have received some comments from some residents. You also should have received a follow-up email from the owner or applicant related to the signage. I know that, that, and I'm sorry, Maston's the last, first name, just escaped me, Michelle.
Rich.
Rich, thank you. Rich Maston had reached out to us in response to us letting everybody know that we're having workshop tonight. And he indicated that if he couldn't be on the call or participate, that he would, we would send him you know, notes from the, from the board's discussion, so.
Well, I read, I read his response, I think that he must have sent, or someone sent to staff's comments of how we felt at the last workshop. And I, I hear his comments, but as far as I'm concerned, the sign does not meet the whimsical and nautical nature of the area. And I still have a major.
Can I just ask, for the applicant, what design guidelines he actually used?
Hang on, the, just as a point of, just as a point of context. There are no design guidelines as far as signage goes for the C Business Commercial District, that were C Business District. And that's what this parcel is zoned. What everybody was referencing are some guidance and preferred design or land use types of considerations from the comprehensive master plan. Those are not reflected in the code. And so therefore, the, the, they're not, there isn't a design standard for signage currently for C Business. So in looking at that, now, Dan, I'll, you know, certainly you'll wanna try it in. Goodness and heaven, I should have, should have put my hair back today as I lean into the camera. I, just as a, as a point of, so you can reference the comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan is not codified, has not, we haven't, we haven't added to the zoning code, design standards for signage.
But the comprehensive plan was put there for a reason.
Right, but it's put there to provide a basis for future zoning changes. And so those zoning changes related to the signage have not yet happened. Couple of things that you could consider is the name, the scale and, you know, sort of the name, the setting, right? So this is a C Business located across the street from a residential district. So the considerations as far as, you know, those might, those might be some things that you can, you know, think about. And but I, I would just be cautious of, you know, I'm not sure how strong of a leg just the comprehensive plan guidance is, and that guidance was more about land use, not specific to signage. If memory serves me, and so just as a point of like being abundantly cautious as you move forward.
So Carrie, hearing you, okay? And you mentioned in your comment there that, you know, we can discuss things like scale and so on and so forth. I would like to request that staff specifically send a comment to the applicant and ask them to clarify and explain their calculations of existing and proposed signage sizes.
Okay.
Because they're saying that the existing sign is a hundred and thirty-two square feet, and they're proposing a hundred and eight square feet. If I look at signage sheet, I don't see how that's possible. Because I believe the definition of a sign or sign area is the biggest bounding box that encloses the sign. And the, if you just look at their own drawing sheet that they did, the new sign is clearly larger than the existing sign. So I, I don't understand how they're claiming it's twenty, or whatever, twenty-four square feet.
So Michelle, are you taking notes right now? Are you able to document or capture that?
I am, but I know there was a discrepancy between the letter of intent in the beginning of the application and and I'm just, I'm just trying to look it up right now. Somehow I, I keep losing.
Cause the, the letter of intent says that the existing internally lighted sign is a hundred and thirty-two square feet. The new sign proposed is a hundred and eight square feet. And I go to their sign sheet and the. And I go to their sign sheet and the dimensions are 10 foot by 10 foot eight inches, which would be 108 square feet. I can understand that math. But if I look at their drawings of how the new sign looks kind of overlaid over the existing sign, it's considerably large.
Is that just one side of the sign Spencer, or is it both sides?
Uh, I think it's just one side, I believe, because if it's, if the post sign is 10 foot by 10 foot eight inches, that would be 108, and I'm assuming this is a double-sided sign and therefore it's technically 216.
And they did get a variance, correct, for increasing the sign size?
They did, I believe, yes.
How much did the variance grant them?
Then I don't know. I'd have to pull it. I don't remember.
I'm looking right now. March was, right?
Yes.
So Dan, if they got a, let's just say for a second that they received a variance. I'm now seeing another square footage on the actual sign drawing that says 106.6. I don't know what area we're talking about, but let's just assume they got a variance for the sign that is proposed that they want to build. Um, what leg or ground or code or, or anything do we have to stand on to really discuss this? Because, uh, it's my personal opinion that this sign is not appropriate for that area down there. Um, but if there's nothing in the code that allows me to do that and they received a variance for it, uh, there's not much I can really do.
Um, yeah, you know, I, I, I think you're, you're on the right track there, you know, you can, the, the, the question previously was what, what effect does the comprehensive plan have? You can always consider the comprehensive plan. It's, it's basically relevant to all of your decisions. Um, to the extent there's something in the code that contradicts something in the comprehensive plan, I think you gotta go with the code. Um, but, but here where you don't really have standards in the code, um, that to, to judge this application by, but and, and I'm, I guess I'm not familiar with the provisions of the, the, the comprehensive plan that, that we were, that were being discussed earlier. But if there's nothing in the code, but there is something in the comprehensive plan, um, you know, I think you can use that. Um, it, it, it's a little bit more difficult to, to say though, that something that the application is going to be denied. Um, that, that I guess gives me a bit of pause to say that we're going to rely on the comprehensive plan potentially to deny an application for a sign, particularly if there's a area variance, um, allowing it. It, you, you probably have more grand to stop, more ground to stand on if you just, uh, if it was a condition, um, that you wanted to impose, if it was a change in the design, um, you know, that, that they could do, but to, you know, maybe deny the application altogether, that, that could be a stretch. And I don't think there's a cut and dry answer in the law here, uh, really, and particularly without knowing exactly what the comprehensive plan, what provisions we're looking at or what, what it says, but I, I don't think it's cut and dry.
Oh, the, the provision in the comprehensive plan that we're looking at, I would, would be this one, I think. It says, sea breeze is an area where gaudily fanciful and or exotic designs may be appropriate. Enhance the area's nostalgic waterfront character by employing early 20th century architectural design theme and building materials. I think that that's the bullet that we would want to nest underneath. Um, and like Spencer says, um, looking at the existing sign, I would say, yes. The proposed sign in, um, the applicant's response, he, you know, basically says I want it to be the same as every other Bill Grace, which is exactly what the comprehensive plan is trying for them not to do. They want to create a unique area. Um, so, uh,
Yeah, and Brad.
The size, you know, if they got a variance for that size, that's fine. But, uh, it just because it's that big, doesn't mean that it doesn't have to look nostalgic.
Brad, to, to your point too, Brad, last time, um, at our workshop, you provided us, you know, with some examples, which were fantastic, including a couple of examples that are right in the same neighborhood, um, that I think employ that general feel that's echoed in the comprehensive plan. Um, so I mean, it's, it's not like there are no other signs in the area that sort of reflect that feeling. Um, there are some, including the one right next door. So I, I, I guess I'm struggling with, like you said, you know, it looking like every other Bill Grace sign. That's, that's not the intent of what we're trying to do here.
There are other Bill.
No, but I think.
That looks that way, but, but that don't look like this, you know what I mean? That have the whimsical.
We did use, uh, their brand as examples of ways that it could be done, you know, from, so I know that they can do it. Um,
So I'm sorry. So where did they do something like that, Brett? You said they did it? Cause I mean, I'm agreeing with everything everybody's saying, but what I also want to respect is they're kind of saying they want it to be their brand that's the same as everything else, which I heard your argument.
So if you look at the slide deck that we looked at for last, uh, last, um, workshop meeting, you'll see, um, a various Bill Grays, local Bill Grays that continue to use their branding, but do it in, um, you know, in, in ways that are consistent with the neighborhood and environment that the look that they're trying to. So I don't necessarily think that they have to deviate away from their branding. Um, they just need to present it in a way that's more, um, consistent with the neighborhood and the comprehensive master plan. Uh, yeah, I honestly, the sign that they have right now is fine. Um, you know, and, and they have done it. I, I, I don't know. I, I, I'd prefer to see them just stick with the sign that they have now or do something along the same vein. That's maybe less maintenance.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think the proposed sign to me looks cookie cutter commercial, which if it were on Ridge Road is completely acceptable. I have no problem with it. But we're not in a cookie cutter commercial area here. We're in a very special, you know, nostalgic area. So I don't think that sign is appropriate.
Well, and the comprehensive plan actually does speak to that. It calls it a neighborhood that would be village-like. Um, that is supposed to focus on family-oriented regional entertainment destination. And I think that's if the code is silent, then we have to rely on something. And it seems to me that the comprehensive plan should be what we're relying on. Um, I also would like to know what their hours of operation are because I know that we can for sure limit the illumination all night for the neighbors.
And, and just to, to chime in here, um, back to that legal question and, and whether the code is silent. I just took a look at it again and it's not exactly silent. It actually does provide some, some standards, um, in, in the design of, of the sign and it, those include, um, for instance, that it complies with the building code, um, and, and other, or other, uh, sort of like structural requirements. But it does not say that it has to comply, um, with, with the design guidelines set forth in the comprehensive plan. And so given that there is a section of the sign, the codified sign regulations that refer to design and those, and it, but it doesn't talk about, um, the design guidelines in the comprehensive plan. You know, I, that, that gives me a bit of pause to, to, to say that we would, you know, look back to the comprehensive plan and that the sign could be denied based on the guidelines set forth in the comprehensive plan. I don't, I don't know that you have authority to, to deny it based on the comp.
Dan, I would, I, I would, uh, I would sort of add a, a counterargument to that statement that you just made. Um, and say that those, those references that you're, and I, I haven't read the code section that you're speaking of, you know, verbatim, but, um, what you're kind of implying to me is that it's talking about, you know, that a sign basically needs to be structurally sound. And, and has, it's, it's talking design related to structure and safety rather than aesthetics. There are no aesthetic discussions there at, at all. I mean, we do in like the mock have some signage guidelines that do start to talk about signs shall be externally illuminated, et cetera, et cetera. There are, it's silent on aesthetics. And so I would tend to argue that we can then talk about the aesthetics of this district based on the comprehensive plan.
That's, that's definitely a, a good point, Spencer. Absolutely. I, I think it's, I think this is a tough one.
I'm not a lawyer. I just play one on Zoom.
You're doing a good job.
Well, I don't think we want to deny them anything. I think we want to enhance what they want to offer the community.
Agree.
Carrie, you're muted.
Carrie, talking again.
Can't get out of mute purgatory.
Carrie, you're still, you're still muted.
Am, am I mute now?
No.
You're good now. You're good now. Oh, you were, you were.
I'm using the space bar function. I'm, I just, something just popped up on my screen that is, uh, stop laughing at me so hard. That's not very nice. Remember we're on the television. I'm, I'm usually calm, cool and collected when the TV is, uh, being operated by Nate in a, in a room. Here I'm a hot mess. Um, what I was going to say is we should also look at the tables that where that outline the types of per, signs that are permitted by district and the different regulations because there are lots of little caveats in the tables that might also expand and or sort of the planning boards purview as it relates to the overall look of signage. So that might, the, the tables themselves that we, where it outlines, um, there's like attachments at the very top of the zoning code tables A, B and C and D. Um, we'll take a look at those to see if that provides any like further, um, broader, uh, consideration for the planning board.
And there's nothing in seeker that could help us with this?
Um, no, I, I, I don't think so. I mean, unless, unless you wanted to.
Signage is a type two. Isn't it what we.
Yep.
Yep. Yep. You're right, Carrie. Sorry.
Yeah. So there's no seeker component here. Just when we want seeker, just when we need seeker, it's not there.
Um, well, he, he's not here tonight. The applicant.
No, I don't think the applicant is, um, participating. We did say we were going to provide feedback or comments from the board.
Well.
I would offer the same feedback that I did at the last workshop. That it just, i- it, it's pushing billboard for me. You know, I mean, this is great for Eastridge Road or Jeffersons. At, but it's way out of character for the neighborhood in my opinion. And I listen, I, I, I know I read his, I read his email like three times and I don't, um, I don't doubt that it is one of the nicest structures in the town.
In an argument.
You, you, you know, it's not, it does not fit with the character of the neighborhood. The sign that they have now is very vintage. It's got neon on it. It's not a half a billboard lit up at all hours of the, you know, evening. So, um, that would be my, it, it's just way out of character would be my comment.
Michelle, did we find out what their variance was approved for in terms of square footage of the signage?
Yes, we did. The variance was, uh, it was a freestanding sign, maximum size for a freestanding sign in the commercial district is 32 square feet. And from the picture, the, from the skylight sign picture where it says sign to be 108 square feet, it looks like it's, uh, 76 square feet.
So they got a variance for how many additional square feet or total square feet?
108. Yeah, exceeding, exceeding the square footage of 76 feet.
So 108 is the total.
But.
Right.
32 is allowed.
And then 100 is the total that they got the variance for?
108 is the total size of the signage, yes.
So since they're going back to you, we thought that you have the measurements of the sign. Does that, um, does that take into account both sides of the sign that they're proposing? Are they within variance?
I just still don't really understand at all their letter of intent that talks about the size of the existing sign. Um, because the existing sign is 132 square feet. Um, but I, I mean, honestly, it's kind of a moot point, I suppose, because if they've received a variance for the sign that's proposed, how they calculated or didn't or miscalculated the existing sign, uh, it doesn't, I guess it doesn't really play into this argument.
Well, they didn't, they didn't get a variance for the sign as proposed, right? They got a, a variance for an additional, what? So many square feet, right? Is that right? I don't know.
Well, I think there might be, I saw the, the variance that they were granted was for 108 square feet. So that's as big as they can go. If they exceed that, um, then they would need to go back to the zoning board.
And Carrie, does, does that allow them two faces at 108 square feet?
Yeah. So when you're doing signage and you're looking, if it's a two-sided sign, you don't, you're not double counting. So just if somebody had a 32 square foot sign, you don't count it as 64 because it's two-sided. It's, it's really the, it's the box, the size of the box they're allowed to have.
Yeah. So basically they have a variance for, let's say, the sign that's proposed. I mean, if I see 106, I see 108 square feet, but either way, they roughly have a variance for the option of what they're asking for. So it's really.
Now comes in the design.
Right. And I, I echo, I think, I think Mr. Evelyn said it very well. Um, I think it's completely out of character for that neighborhood. I think that existing sign is very appropriate for the neighborhood. I think the existing sign is even verge, on the verge of being too big, but that doesn't matter really for this. Uh, but I think the design of it is much more appropriate for that area than the proposed sign is.
Right. So the question, this, so the, the board feels that what's there now, now the applicant is, right now I feel like we're going in that the board, is it appropriate? And Michelle, I hope you're taking some good notes here, my friend, because I'm not taking a single note. Is it, would it be appropriate for us this, for us to provide back the feedback that the current sign as presented doesn't match the character of the neighborhood, doesn't match the proposed, um, land use or design criteria outlined in the comprehensive plan? And that the board would like the applicant to consider some change in design that moves the sign closer to what was, either what is there now as far as aesthetic goes, or something that would be supported by the comprehensive plan language as far as design elements.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that. The only thing I would add is to, um, I would like the hours of operation.
Okay.
I mean, we will, we'll make that some kind of condition no matter what, right?
Well, I think, is it a fair question to ask them how long, what hours they want the sign to be on and lit?
I think it's, I think, I think to Alan's point, it's a fair question to ask them what their hours of operation are because they do have more of a taproom bar scenario and there's a good chance that they might stay open until midnight or two in the morning. And if they do, we may not extend our typical, you know, what is it? Two hours after one?
Right. Right.
We might, we might say.
Guys, don't we have to? Yeah, but don't we have to sort of respect what they're, how, we should ask them what their current, um, lighting is today.
I want to know their hours of operation, Bernie.
No, no, I don't disagree with what you're saying. Alan, I, I agree with that whole hardly. What I'm trying to get at though is, um, just so we don't get caught in something here, shouldn't we know if they turn it off today? Or do they leave it on 24 hours? Do they just shut off the open when they're not open? I don't know.
I, in, in my opinion, I, I don't think that matters because our current MO by this board is that we have all signs turn off unless it's got an emergency need. Or we grant special allowances. I think we did grant special allowances on, on one or two projects for very specific signage. I think we did on Cube Smart and something else as well. Um, so I mean, to me, they're coming in for a new application. It doesn't have any bearing what they do today, in my opinion.
Because I don't believe, my, my understanding from the, um, hearing at zoning was that that sign was just grandfathered in. It was never approved anytime.
Yeah. So the signage as it exists, we were, we couldn't really find, um, proof that it had been granted past variances for its existing sort of configuration. So that's why we determined that they needed variance to propose anything as far as size and, um, you know, in, um, and so I think that this board can, where normally you might have your provision of two hours after and one hour before, in this instance, you might have the lights go out the minute the place is not open for business. in this instance, you might have the lights go out the minute the place is not open for business.
Yeah, that, that's my, that's my thinking depending on, you know.
The other thing to add, I'm curious is whether or not you want to ask whether or not depending on how they designed the sign, could portions of the signage turn off? So that one part is kept on, only the part that's open for business remains lit, so the taproom piece stays lit, but the other portions turn off. So that doesn't give you the idea that you can go in and get a hamburger when you really can't. You can only go get a beer and a hamburger.
Yeah.
Both of those sound very good to me right now. I haven't eaten dinner yet.
It's not necessary for that entire sign to be lit up the whole time when only a portion of the business is open.
Right, so that's another thing we might ask them to, to talk about the hours of our operation. And then if it's, if it varies depending on the occupancy of the building. So are there some functions that are open different hours than others? Cause that might impact your decision making.
Well, one of the things that's weighing heavy, I think, on my decision is that the, the, regardless of how they calculated that square footage on the existing sign, which I think maybe they're taking into account that like part that sticks up in the air, you know, the wooden part um, above the blue gray sign, I don't know. Um, but you're taking a sign that larger was only thirty percent lit any one time. And now you're taking a sign that's a hundred and eight square feet and the whole thing's gonna be.
Right.
So sign wise, it's smaller, lit cabinet area is.
Excuse me, God bless you.
Yeah, I, I think. Four or five times as much. Yeah, you know, I mean, like they're taking a sign that's, that was partially lit, although larger was partially lit, and now they're making it just this one giant lit box.
So that's what. So that taproom part was not lit before, is that what you're saying?
Taproom part was lit from above, so it had a, had a light that pointed down at it from underneath the abbots. But it was not internally lit. The only things that were lit on that old sign were the Bill Gray's arrow, the Abbott's arrow and that neon open sign. The rest of it was unlit. And now you're taking something and you're making the entire cabinet LED backlit. Which I think again speaks to the appropriateness of the existing sign to the character of the neighborhood and the inappropriateness of the big commercial, big billboardy kind of sign that would be all internally lit. Yeah, I totally agree with you there.
We've got a lot of feedback.
Consideration, right? You know, there's not, the only, I'm thinking, there's only one example, I think, of an interior lit sign in that area. Most of it is external lit or the reason that we gave, you know, a large degree of neon.
And I totally understand that. I don't want them to think that we're not getting that, that point. But the point is that you're taking something that's very retro and very partially lit and kind of interesting and unique. I mean, I don't know. When I drive down there and see that sign, it's very, it's different. It's got parts that are structural elements that aren't part of a sign. And you're taking that away and you're giving these neighbors and anyone that's driving down there one giant lit square, you know, it, 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 even for the neighbors that live across the street. You know, they, they're gonna go from something that was, that was half lit to something that's a beacon. You know, is that fair to those people? I don't really think it is. I wouldn't be happy with it.
And that was the comment. We did get, uh, feedback right from one of the neighbors and that was that neighbor's concern. The, the amount of lit area, I think.
They're gonna be sitting in their living rooms and it's gonna look like this does on camera, but they're not gonna have any lights on them.
If the light's gonna be as bad as Mike Evelyn's, then we definitely have to do something.
Carrie and Dana, um, do we have anything, uh, in this zoning district that discusses, uh, like light spill and illumination, you know, over property and so on?
Not for sign, I have to look at the signage code because you have to be, remember this is a signage application. This isn't, you know, site plan or something along those lines. So I'll have to take a look if there's any limitations there, um.
But I mean, in, in, I, I'm not saying in, in ironic way necessarily, but in other site plan applications I have made to other towns, we have to include any sign lighting in our foot candle, you know, illumination layouts. Um, especially now with the LEDs, you know, signs are getting brighter and brighter and brighter and it, we've been, we've been required to limit the lumen output of our signs in other.
So one of the things, I, and I don't know if ours, our, our sign code hasn't been updated in quite some time. I don't know that it's, it's caught up to that. So I have to take a look to see if we have any provisions with respect to the lighting of signs. Um, I think this is one of those times where this board, um, and your purview of, review of signage, which you have the ability to review new signage in this district. I think you could look at the lumens and ask them, and that's if you wanna ask them what the light spill will be from the light as proposed. I don't think that's an unfair question, especially if you're looking at, you know, impact to neighbors. One, one thing to caution is depending on what that shows, um, the lumen spill versus visibility are two different things.
Completely, completely different things. I, I'm, I'm more, more interested in, uh, Mr. Evelyn's comments about, you know, the, the quantity of existing sign that is lighted versus the quantity of proposed sign that is lighted. Um, I still don't like the general design of this proposed sign. But I think at a minimum, major portions of it have to be non-light.
Right. Okay. Michelle, I, we, you and I can work on sort of the crafting of the email and I, what I might do is, um, maybe fact check it with this group before we send it just to make sure that we're accurately, because this is one that's a little bit more nuanced isn't the right word, but I want to make sure we're, I'm capturing your thoughts adequately as a board before I forward it to the applicant. So I'll likely send it to you before I send it out so you guys can all make sure that it captures the common, comments that I'm hearing today before we send the feedback. And what I'll probably do is say, sort of, as part of the discussion, these are the things or points that were raised. I won't, you know, um, I won't, we won't be assigning them to anybody. It will be sort of just general discussion.
Got it.
Wait a minute, I'm married. She's not here.
Okay. That's how I do my project assignments when people don't come to my meetings. Um, any other conversation around this one or are we ready to move on? The last item is item for board action. So this, um, at the March, uh, town board meeting, the town board accepted an application uh, for rezoning of St. Cecilia's, uh, twenty-seven thirty-two Culver Road, um, from what is currently R two to R five to allow for the development of, um, senior housing on site. This would be coming to you eventually as a planning board application for subdivision of land and site plan. But right now, what you're being asked to do is provide comment to the town board about the idea of rezoning this parcel, um, for, to allow for the development of senior housing. Um, the, Michelle, the, the, the plan elevations were, did modify from original application. I'm sure that the planning board has seen. Now one of the buildings is being, again, this is again, a comment on the use and the zoning change that the town board is gonna be contemplating. Um, the public hearing will open at the April town board meeting, which is going to be conducted in a very similar fashion as we are here. Um, we are gonna have, there is gonna be, I think, at the town board level, um, Nate, if he's in the building and he can hear me talking, will stop me if I'm wrong. I think there is gonna be some kind of a call-in mechanism. However, the supervisor has indicated to me they are gonna hold the public hearing open on the rezone as long as it takes to get to a place where we have in-person participation again. So they're not gonna be acting quickly just because they're not gonna, they're not feeling compelled to act. They would never act on the same night as the, the meeting opens. In this instance, they're gonna hold the meeting open for another month or two, however long it takes so that now that, once the social distancing requirements have been relaxed and we can convene a public meeting with public participants. But this board is being asked to look at the zoning, um, change itself. What I can share.
Carrie, did you just say that there's a change and one of the buildings was removed or something? Did I, what did I?
No, one of the buildings increased. They had to, they originally were contemplating reusing, reuse of the school structure um, because of the costs in, and, um, required to abate the building, which were astronomical. They had to abandon that plan. They're sort of gonna mothball that building, I believe, not try to propose it for any use. Uh, there's some components of the existing structure that wouldn't be used um, or altered or, or, or touched so that it's not causing any issues. Um, and so the one building on the south end of the, uh, property that runs adjacent to the highway would be a three-story, uh, height. So that, again, this is not, this, this is site plan level. This is really at the town board saying, hey, we're looking at rezoning this parcel of land. What do you think? So that's really what they're asking you to comment on. The site plan related items you'll get to have a stab at during site plan and subdivision review should the zoning be granted.
Um.
But they are gonna remove a built, they are gonna remove a building though, Carrie, right?
Let me just, I'm gonna explain that piece to you as well. The plan, the arrangement that the, um, senior housing folks have with the, um, uh, diocese and or no, with the, um, with the parish is that home is currently home to a retired priest. The parish has, and as they've come to an agreement that, that priest who I think is maybe in his nineties can live all his remaining days in that home. They will not take that house down until he no longer resides there. So they would be phasing the project accordingly. And they're able to construct it in such a way, because I think the home is actually where parking is being proposed. So they would be able to develop, you know, raise that building once it was feasible for them to do so. Once it's no longer occupied by a resident. Um, but that's gonna be sort of a, so you'd be making, again, we're, we're only, this board is only right now being asked to talk about the zoning application um, with a referral back to the town board.
So can you just explain real quickly the difference between R three, R three and R five? I think is what's being proposed, right?
Yeah, is it R two or R three currently?
R two.
Okay.
R two.
So R two is a single family, so allows for single-family homes developed. The, the difference between R one, R two and R three is really the minimum building size required to build a single-family house. That's what the primary difference between the three different designations. R five allows for multifamily development, which is what this would be proposing. R five also allows the existing school and church to exist by right. So by making the zoning change, you're not creating a, um, non, you know, pre-existing, non-conforming use with the existing structures that will continue to be there. They are proposing a subdivision. Um, again, that's not before you now. That would only come before you if the zoning were to go through.
So Carrie, there's, uh, the, the property directly to the east. I believe that borders has a common, uh, property line. That's an apartment building.
It is apartment, yeah.
Is that zoned differently?
That is already zoned, I believe, R five.
Okay, so it's sort of.
Contiguous too.
Continue it.
Yeah, the other thing too is that when we look at our comprehensive plan, you know, and hon- honestly, the supervisor before, you know, the supervisor isn't compelled to take up these applications unless they feel like there's some merit to it. If somebody comes in with a rezoning application that makes no sense, it doesn't have any backing with the comprehensive plan, the town board just doesn't even entertain it. Um, but in looking at the comp plan, many of the, um, sort of provisions for considering a change of zoning have been checked with this, this particular, um, project. So it's proximity to, you know, major thoroughfare, it's access um, to, um, public transit, the fact that it's providing senior housing, which was identified need very specifically in the comprehensive plan. It's also expanding housing type or continuing to expand housing type, which was identified as a, as a need in the comprehensive plan as well. So the, the plan, the zone is supported in the comprehensive plan. The zone changes, uh, supported by that as well, just so you have that background.
Did we get any paperwork for this, uh, 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 application or something?
Yeah, by email.
You want us to. So we, what we could do between now and the next meeting is we can get the hard copies to you and either in a drop or via mail. So you have hard copies to look at that are.
Oh, I, we did, we did get it in the mail. It came with the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Forgive me, Michelle, for doubting you.
It did?
It came.
It came with, it was sent on, um, sorry, I just closed it.
Yeah, I got it via email.
Four nine.
Four nine.
Via email, not, not hard, not hard copy.
Yeah, email.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Um, the house we're talking about, that, that's being, it may or may not be. Is that the one that's that borders right on Culver Road or is that the one that's on?
Directory. It's directory.
The A-frame.
So, so the one that's on, I think that's Brower, right? The one that runs, um, is it east west there? There is a house that's between this property and that apartment property. Which I believe would probably be zoned R one, right? It's just a little single-family home.
I believe you're right.
Yeah, you're, you're muted, Carrie.
Marcel, Marcel.
Yeah, you're right, Mike. You, you. There is, there's like the, the, the little house in the big city there. Um, stuck in between the two, so. I know that we have that R five apartment, but we need to think about that person.
Yeah, so this is one of those occasions where the, um, the applicant didn't identify or communicate the need to change the zoning of that adjacent lot. Do you know what I mean? So they're, they're looking, I understand your point. Um, the board can make the zoning change. Um, if it's something that you want them to look at, whether or not they want to change the zoning of that parcel to.
Is, is that part of this application, that little house on Brower?
I don't believe so. I'll have to double check.
I'm not thinking that it is. My concern is that we're gonna surround that R one with R five. That, that's the reason I'm bringing it up. Yeah, it's, it's not shown on the site plans, you know, as, as part of the application. Um, I, I do completely hear what you're saying. Uh, and I think it's, it's a point that we may want to make a recommendation or a comment to the town board to at least consider. Uh, I would sort of, I guess, make the argument that, you know, the, the zoning change on the, uh, church parcel is really not in common area with that property. Right, that's, that's up at Brower and, you know, all the proposed stuff would be further away. Um, but I do think it's probably a good recommendation or consideration that we should offer to the, to the town board.
I have a question about, um, choosing R five. So the last one of the recent parcels that we rezoned was across the street, correct? And we moved that to mixed-use commercial? Am I correct?
We, you are. And one of the things that we are trying to navigate is the updating that, that section of code so that it's not so geographically specific as it is right now. Um, I will tell you that's something that we've like sort of started thinking about in the background, but that's a process. Um, and it would also create, um, a, because we looked at it before as an option. It creates a heavier burden with respect to the zoning variances required for, um, you know, the density and things like that. So that's another sort of factor.
I only ask that because, you know, if we were gonna begin, if we were gonna be rezoning properties along that corridor, uh, you know, that it would make sense for them to.
Well, what I will tell you is that I think, you know, someday when my dreams come true and we get to do a map amendment and make some up updates to the zoning code, tho- those, these transitional areas would allow what's happening now but in a more sort of, um, uniform and with some design guidelines and these type of in place because.
Because.
You know, Culver Road, Culver Road's a place that makes sense for that type of mixed-use development to happen.
Unlike the last time, this, this is not nestled back into a neighborhood. It's on the, it's on the, um, you know, the arterial. So if it were to be, uh, switched to mixed-use commercial, it would also give the planning board a lot more um, tools to make sure that that development was, uh, more pedestrian friendly and things of that nature where R five doesn't necessarily have all the schools.
But wouldn't it make the church and the school also non-compliant? Well, wouldn't it make the church and the school also non-compliant?
I have to double check that. I have to take a look.
I don't think the church is allowed. To be existing non-conforming though?
We can take a, I can take a look at that.
Churches aren't allowed in all residential?
Churches are allowed in residential.
So if it's R five, it's still compliant, is it not?
Yeah, it would be the.
You're talking about the coast to a muck.
Yeah, I'm with you. Yeah, I got it, right.
So, I mean, yeah, so um. I think that the applicant was looking for guidance on, you know, the applicant wanted to change to the zoning that would. That most closely aligned with their use of the. Uh, you know, and their intended development. Um, and then uh, also minimizes to some extent their, the request for area variances. Associated with the application.
I would agree with, with, with Brad though, that I, I. I would be comfortable putting forth this suggestion or comment that I, that I think it would be. Just for continuity's sake, nice to have that in a muck district. When the stuff across the street with the hope that we could make that whole corridor in a muck. And I understand it's more of a burden on, on this applicant. I know they've applied probably for R five and not for a muck. Um, rezone, but you know, it would be, um, I think we'd be kinda doing ourselves a favor if we did that. So I, I agree with you on that, Brad.
But it is a, it's probably the square footage, right? Is the one that they would be way over.
Way over, way over in square footage. And then um, that's, that's the big one. And honestly, you know, if the zoning board understands, you know, sort of what the intent is. That may not be, be, maybe not a non-issue, but. As far as from an exposure standpoint as the applicant, if anybody were not to like it and wanna challenge it. That might be a place where they could, you know. You know, it just said, that's one of the, I think, one of the factors that they weighed when they were deciding what to ask for. I'm happy to, to, you know, I can certainly have it be, you know, have a conversation or re- relay the um. The conversation that's happening at this workshop to the supervisor and to the town board. Um, so that if, again, it's their prerogative to make a change. You know, the applicant makes the application. Um, and the, but ultimately the decision of map amendments is on the town board. So. I can certainly, they can take the information and the guidance. You know, into advisement as they contemplate the application.
I sort of think it makes sense so to tie into the R five next door to it.
I think Michelle just checked out.
So I'm here. I'm just, I'm just, I'm.
I, I see what you're saying, Ellen. I just um, thought maybe it might be an idea worth exploring. Um, not necessarily a route that we wanted to take. Um, and I just wanted to put it on the table as maybe something to look at. I mean, it would also open up the lot for more, if, you know, if this, for whatever reason, didn't come all the way through for. Whatever reason, it leaves the lot more marketable, I would assume. Because it, it has more of, more uses that could be put, put there.
I'm satisfied with what the applicants asked for. Bernie.
Okay.
Well, what do I, I, I was gonna bring up the muck, but Bradley beat me to it, so.
So stay out of the muck. Are we done?
All right. All right, so it sounds like you're wanting the board to at least contemplate the idea of whether or not the mixed-use commercial. Zoning district could be an app, an applicable use. The um, I know that members of the town board were concerned about that. Going forward, too much forward without a change to the zoning district. Language. I can talk to the supervisor about that and whether or not, you know, that's something that can be navigated in a similar timeframe.
I agree. I think that that's important, especially with those design guidelines, because they're very Hudson Cooper centric and. We continue to expand this muck, which I agree should not be only in that area, then we gotta have design guidelines that are applicable in the new places.
Right, I, I think.
Right, cause it's probably gonna come up on that other lot across the, across the highway eventually, right? So.
Right. Um, so we can, we can, yeah, and I think again, you know, the uncertainty of, of timing of things and how long. The town board is gonna be contemplating this application in general, just because they've committed to not. Rendering a decision until they can convene people in person. We have no idea when that's going to be at this point. With, we can't predict with any certainty.
Would, would that hold for us too then? We probably won't. We won't see anything until it can be in public or?
Nope. You guys can go ahead and make decisions, cause we're gonna have provisions to have people participate publicly at the public hearing. What I would say is, um, and certainly we can talk with Dan, that if anything is controversial. Or things could be challenged, then we might wanna, you know, you may wanna hold. And so Dan, I don't know what your thoughts are about that.
I didn't think that was a question of public hearing. I thought we were just making a recommendation to the board.
Well, correct. I'm saying that the town board isn't gonna render any decision on the application before them.
Yeah, that part I understand.
Yeah, then Bernie was asking, does, do you guys, are you able to make decisions at the public hearing in two weeks? And the answer is yes.
I, I thought he meant, should we hold it?
Yeah, no. I mean, you guys should, could make your recommendation to the board.
Right.
Um, and you'll have, you'll be able to do that in two weeks at the regular meeting. Um, in the meantime, I can provide, I can provide the, at least the initial feedback that I'm hearing. From some members, whether or not the mixed-use commercial should be considered. Michelle, if you have Corona, you're not allowed back in the office. I'm just gonna tell you that right now.
I don't have Corona.
Okay, just checking.
I think, I think we should, I think we should also be looking at making a, a comment or a recommendation. Uh, that the town board seriously consider the resident at seventy-seven Brower.
Okay.
How, how a rezone would affect them, because they would essentially become an island.
Right.
Okay.
Correct. So, so Carrie, can you talk a little, I'm sorry, is there anything more on this particular one or? To Ellen's point, you want to? My question was gonna be, how is the public hearing gonna be held in two weeks?
So what we've, we've done two things. In the posting of the public hearing, we've advised folks that. People cannot attend in person and that we are encouraging people to submit their comments in writing. Either via email, via regular letter, or the Dropbox that's available at Town Hall. Nate is, and I are, and Michelle are gonna work on whether or not a phone-in system. So could be accomplished, in other words, it's gonna be the caller you're on the line, that, you know, right now, there's a. Zoom has the ability to like, we're test, we're gonna test whether the phone folks can be sort of um. You know, kept in a queue, and then they get a chance to speak um. When the turn, when their time comes as far as uh, what they wanna talk about. So that's gonna be a little bit of a logistical thing, um, where we're gonna be able to. Receive comments from folks via the phone. And if that's the case. We will make sure that we publicize that pretty widely, so people know they can call in to voice their concern.
So are you gonna, are you gonna test this with the town board meeting that's coming up first or?
No, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna just test it off, offline, so it's not live during a meeting and we don't embarrass ourselves in public. Um, we're gonna.
No, no, I mean, the first one gonna be the town board before us.
Yeah, the town, yeah, the town board isn't doing that. They've opted to. You know, accept all the, you know, written comments as part of the public hearing testimony, and that's why they're electing for this. This is the only. Public hearing that's happening at the town board level, that they don't um. They're gonna hold the, the public hearing open until they can gather people or come up with another mechanism for people to provide direct input during the meeting.
So we might be the first ones that do it purely like on Zoom or whatever.
May, perhaps, yes. We're gonna be, um, we are gonna be going where no men or women have gone before, as far as public meetings go in the town of Orona-Cloy.
I like the little risk.
There are other municipalities in Monroe County that are, that are doing the Zoom meetings um, for their, for their public hearing.
Okay.
It's not entirely.
All right, is there anything else?
One of those, one of those pub, one of those public hearings got what they called Zoom bombed, if I recall, so.
Oh, boy. I hadn't heard about that. All right, anything else that we need to chat about?
They've updated security though, Bernie.
Well, that's it. I mean, it's all around controlling. If something like that happens, can you shut it off?
Well, right now, because there's no public hearing component to this meeting, Nate is sort of, you know, out of the window and maybe. Half paying attention to us as we're having this meeting. Um, oh. I spoke too soon. He's listening loud and clear. Um. So Nate would be able to like, take control very quickly if there was something where, where to go sideways.
Yeah, we.
Thank you, Nate. I'm always zooming in right now in such a dramatic way. I am loving it.
I'm glad somebody finally referenced that, cause I've been laughing at this all meeting.
I feel like Andy Warhol is here. So that, I mean, I think that's our plan. Uh, you know, this, we appreciate everybody's. You know, patience and willingness to fly with us on this, because we have been saying. Overusing the expression that we are building the plane while we're flying it. When it comes to all of the, the things that we're having to change to online in these times. And I've been saying that in this circumstance, we're building a fight, a fighter jet while we're flying it. And trying to navigate. So it's um, it can be a little bit challenging. So appreciate everybody's flexibility as a. You know, when it comes to participating in meetings in this new format. And I'm gonna have to do a lot better with my lighting situation and my hair for the next live video for the public hearing. This is not. I can't have this be for like, the all-time now.
You can borrow this lamp if you want. I mean, it's.
I gotta look at uplighting. I have to do something. Certainly, the angle of this computer is ridiculous. I've got like, three chins happening. With this angle, it's not good.
I, I still got more than you, Carrie. Don't worry.
Well, thank you, Bernie. Um.
Are we still live?
Uh, we probably are. The meeting is still going on. You should have received, um, you would have received minutes, Michelle, yet or no?
No, not yet. I'm still working on. The trail one lakefront public input. There was a lot of it, if you recall.
So, the hope would be Michelle's able to get to him before the public hearing, so you'll have him in time to review? And comment? Okay.
Absolutely.
I think that public input's still going on.
Um, all right, anything else?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Nate.
Before everybody goes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just make a quick announcement. Um, you know, I, I regretfully have to inform you guys that I think um. Tonight is my last meeting with you. Um, I'll no longer be with Nixon Peabody after this week. Um, and I, I just wanted to let you guys all know, it has been my absolute pleasure to, to serve you um, on this board. I've really enjoyed working with all of you, and I hope that um, at some time in the future, I get to work with you guys again. Um, and I really mean that.
Well, thank you for your counsel.
Yes, thanks for being here.
You were great, Dan.
Good luck.
Best of luck.
Whatever you're doing.
Matrimonial law, I hope.
I don't know about that.
I think after coronavirus, I think divorce law is gonna be on the rise.
There's gonna be some divorces, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, bye, everybody.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Orona-Cloy Planning Board on ICAT Government Access.